Saturday's a little sketchy, they're coming to fix my shirt. The windshield.
I'm gonna go in dust it.
I'm sure you don't know what it is.
Between twelve and five.
Solid area.
Four, three is a good one.
No.
Sure, okay. Okay, we'll keep that. And again, it really is our, you have one question.
So it'll end up being, I don't know, three, twenty-five hundred dollars.
Twenty-five hundred more, yeah.
Yeah. So about, a little over three thousand, I think.
Wow.
Really substantial. And as long as we keep sending people to UNIM to work. We've had a lot of really generous UNIM employees.
Yeah.
We have.
Seth is a Scarborough grad, is that right?
He is. He's a Scarborough grad and came back and coached us for us now.
Great.
Senior kid.
Great.
Adul.
Any other questions? Okay, we had a motion second. All in favor of accepting this donation? I think it's seven plus one.
Thank you. Is that something we could reach out to UNIM employees, like most of?
Well, we're currently working with the police department and the fire department on a UNIM grant. So they're constantly, they have a big philanthropic department. And I believe they also have a person who's specific to supporting schools. Is it Carrie?
No, Carrie Olson.
Oh, Carrie Olson. Yeah.
Also, Bob Mitchell, who is a former school board person, had, over the years, made substantial contributions. And I still hit him up for the free Thanksgiving dinner. And because we have it at Wentworth, he makes the check, his check out to Wentworth. And UNIM makes the donation to the Wentworth School for the free Thanksgiving dinner. Those donations have covered.
How much?
I can only tell, I can't remember the exact amount. But I can tell you, it covers the cost of what we pay to the party shop. For the linens, all the linens, and the dishes, and the silverware. And they have given us a donation. They donate half for that activity also, the party shop.
Okay. Very good. So now we have seven point oh, seven point one, and seven point two together. If you don't mind, the high school and the middle school spring coaches for approval. Is there a motion?
Move approval is printed.
Second.
Any questions about these coaching positions?
I just think it's always important to note that some of them are booster funded, and some of them are actually volunteers. There are a lot of folks that give to our programs.
Any other questions about this? Okay. All in favor of these current positions? Seven point one, thank you. And now one to the workshop.
So I think tonight will be one of those nights that you gain a whole new or reinforced appreciation for data wise. Kathy and Barb will be our facilitators again tonight for part two of our budget workshop. And we'll talk a little bit about that as we get started here tonight.
Okay. So I just want to go over the norms. We have our table tents, the take an increased stance. And so that's really important, that you guys ask questions. Ground statements and evidence. Assume positive intentions. Stick to protocol and hear all voices. Start and end on time. We're gonna really try that tonight. And be here now. And enjoy the learning, the one that we added.
And the Aces, the ACE Habits of Mind, will ground us in our work. Shared commitment to action, assessment, and adjustment. Intentional collaboration, and a relentless focus on evidence. Something to keep in mind as we work together.
And then I wanted to, the hard copy of the agenda you have is just today's agenda. But Julie, could you go back and go to the link of the running agenda? So the title of the slide deck, oh, do you have to stand up?
I think so.
Okay.
Go ahead.
That's a link. That's a link to the agenda. And you'll see, Julie will scroll down. You'll see our agenda. Today's is then put to the top. And then if you scroll down, you'll see a vote this agenda.
Do we have, was that shared with us?
Um, I believe so.
I didn't see it on my desk.
You know what I can do?
It is posted on the budget portal. But, oh, the new one's not though, right?
The new one, not yet. But I'll share that right now.
Okay.
And as far as the agenda goes, I will always add notes as we speak, so you can go back and take a look at.
Yeah. So Julie is the facilitator. I'm the timekeeper today. And Barb is taking the notes. So check-ins. Does anybody have anything that they need to share so that they can stay focused on this meeting here?
Too much, we are, check-ins are very short.
Yeah.
I'll tell you, I'm tired.
You got a lot of company.
I think we all are, Jackie.
Yes, eleven thirty was a late night. But I do just have one comment. I just wanted to thank Donna, and Jody, and Carrie for their courage and their strength last night. I think that was probably one of the hardest public hearings that any of us have witnessed or participated in. And I'm amazed at how smart you are, how articulate you are, how passionate you are, and how you've been able to endure all of this complexity during this really tough time. So I'm really proud and honored to be the superintendent in Scarborough and know that we have amazing school board members like you. So thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so now let's just go over the pluses and deltas from the previous meeting, remembering that deltas were things we would change in the future. The format and the agenda worked well, at least at the start. We did tend to, we were taking more time as we went on. Loved, people loved the budget book. It was clear, readable. Everyone kept on data wise track, at least we tried. And there was a K-12 perspective at the table on the fifth. Some changes or deltas, add more time for each speaker and questions. Now that is one where, when I, Barb and I worked on the agenda for today, we added ten minutes for questions instead of five. And we kept to the ten minutes. And then we looked at our time, and it was ten o'clock. And we're like, no, people are tired. And so Julie helped us to get down to nine thirty. But I think we're gonna try to beat that too. And Joanne's one of the speakers for her department, so. We gave her ten minutes for three sections, so.
Joanne's from New York, she can talk to us.
That's right.
And then for next year, really looking at having this workshop, not on the same day as the first reading, having it earlier. Have shorter sessions, spread out over time. It'll be interesting, because tonight is a little bit more of a mini session. We can see how it feels. And maybe do that next year for all of the departments. Having the materials ahead of time would have allowed everybody to digest it. Break presentations up by department or phase, and forward questions that come up to Kate or Julie. Okay, I'm good.
So as we get into our work, you know, we always like to start with our mission. Particularly, I find this important, an important reminder when we're talking about the budget. We want to be mindful of the bottom line while also thinking about, how do we ensure that we stay true to our mission? And so here's why the Scarborough Public Schools exists in our mind. The fundamental purpose of the Scarborough Public Schools is to provide a safe and inclusive learning environment where each and every student is empowered to be a resilient, lifelong learner who is prepared to engage as a contributing member of society. And so I just ask that you keep that all close to your thoughts today as we learn more about our budget. And so here's our workshop goal for today. Kate, do you want to talk a little bit about that?
Well, I think that I'm visioning today as a continuation of Thursday the fifth, because our goal on that day, obviously, we didn't quite make it, was to get through all the departments and have an opportunity to have a really deep dive. So this is our chance to go, not line by line, but department by department, phase by phase, and ask the questions that are going to allow the board to then go out and feel confident, comfortable advocating for this budget. Not all questions are answered immediately at this table. But this workshop gives us protected time to tackle, on a little bit deeper level, what's in the budget, what's not in the budget, and to hear directly from the folks who are managing those different phases and departments. This is our overview telling us what we did before. And actually, the next couple of slides, I think, are kind of gonna be a little bit of a repeat. But we wanted to reorient everyone to the work that we did on April fourth, April fifth, and to remind us all of what the process was about. And then to sort of feel as though we were up to speed and ready to jumpstart into the next segment of the same process.
And I think that after participating in four out of the five budget outreach meetings, the work that we've done, or at least it seemed as though the work that we've done had really prepared all of the board members who spoke. You all were really articulate and able to answer the questions that were asked of you. And we didn't really know what the questions would be. And they were wide and varied and different at each session. And we hope that today will further deepen your understanding. You can also ask some clarifying questions if there's things since you, since our last session or since the budget outreach meetings that you've been wondering about or that you've been asked. Kate and I are working collaboratively on answering all of those questions. But later on, we're gonna try to narrow it down to like, what are the top five questions that we heard? So you can be thinking about that, and thinking about how we can communicate this with our community. So we'll do a recap of our work. We'll talk about what new information that we have. We'll finish the sharing of the departments tonight. And then we'll develop those, you know, we'll continue to refine those talking points that we developed at our last session as well. So, ready for the quick recap? Actually, any one of you could do this part, I'm sure. But I'll buzz through it. Remember that this year, our budget goals were to hold the operating budget under a three percent increase in expenditures. Check, we've been able to do that. We also wanted to hold the net expenditure increase under six percent, and we've been able to do that. We also set a goal to prioritize our K-12 resources while also monitoring enrollment trends and trying to shift our existing resources to align with our shifting needs. In the school system, our needs change daily, weekly, monthly, depending upon what our students need and what our staff needs at the time. And we're always trying to create a budget that allows us to be flexible, agile, and responsive to those shifting needs. And we wanted to continue to do that here in FY nineteen. We also have a moral and ethical and legal obligation to ensure that all students are receiving required and appropriate services. So as we talk about often with our community, the public school system is unique in terms of comparison to private schools, because we educate every single student who shows up at our door. And we educate them in a way that allows them to have a free and appropriate education. And that means that all students, no matter what their needs are, we have to ensure that they have full and equal access to our curriculum, to our activities, and to our programs. And so that's always a priority for us. And then, of course, we want to maintain the growth, the incremental growth that you have all worked so hard to achieve over time by maintaining our existing programs. And knowing that this was a tight budget year, we felt that we needed to articulate these goals really clearly so that we could keep this in mind as we're challenged with tough questions over the next few days. The other thing we're really preparing for, we have two big events coming up next week. We have May first, which is our joint town council, school board, finance committee meeting next door. There's some other town departments having their opportunity with the town council to talk with their, with them about their budgets. Jen, did you already go, Jen?
Yeah.
Jen had her turn today. I believe Sedco and the library also had their turn today. So our turn is on May first. Now, we get to have protected time.
I think it's six, but I'll double check that while you talk, Julie.
And is that, that's for the entire board, correct?
It's, it's a, we're doing it as a joint town council, school board, finance committee meeting this year, which is a little different than what we usually do. But I would encourage the full board to attend as long as you're able. There you go, it's right on your agenda. And then May second, the very next night, is the, is the public hearing on the budget. This is where we will learn if there are any refinements that need to be made. We might get some indication of that on May first from the council. I don't know if Jen got any indication of that today. Okay. So we might get some indication of that on May first. And then we have second reading with, or, yeah. Public hearing on the second. And then we have second reading on the sixteenth with the council, and then second reading with the school board on the seventeenth. So a busy couple of weeks coming up. And that's all listed on our agenda as well.
Just so you know, right up front, I am away from May eleventh until May nineteenth.
Okay. Thank you, Jackie. Kate, were you gonna add something?
I was gonna throw something in. I kind of wrangled the school board finance committee into committing to a quick finance committee meeting just before the public hearing on May second. And I believe Kelly posted that agenda out already for us. We just pulled that together on the fly, because we really wanted a moment between the joint finance committee meeting and then the following week when the finance committee of the town council will begin to talk about what their recommendations are, so that we can figure out what the will of the board is and act on our side. And the timing has shifted a little bit, because the school board meeting, which would typically have been on the third of May, is now gonna be on the tenth of May. So we've been, we've been juggling and adding and making people do extra things. And I appreciate that.
What time is the finance meeting on May second?
Finance meeting on May second will be at six fifteen. And just before the public hearing. And at the moment, I believe we've got it scheduled to be upstairs in superintendent's conference room, because these rooms are both going to be in use right before the town council meeting.
So every year, as we develop the budget, we also have some challenges that we're aware of. This is year two of us being in receiver status. We also knew that, last year in planning FY eighteen, that we would have a fund balance gap to fill. That was a two point one million dollar fund balance. We've been working hard over the year with a curtailment and other cost-saving measures to minimize that gap as we prepared FY nineteen. We continue to have rising fixed costs, year after year, in terms of salaries and benefits, and then other utilities like fuels, and art fuel, and electricity. And then we are always keeping an eye on the state and federal mandates, and what's coming down the pike, and how that will direct our work. And just today, we were engaging in some ESSA work, which is the federal mandate that replaces No Child Left Behind. So a quick quiz, what does ESSA stand for?
Every Student Succeeds Act.
All right, good. What does PVE stand for? And CDS?
And CNA.
And what is CNA, Joanne?
CNA.
Joanne learned it when today.
He's a sex pedant.
Yes, not a nurse.
All this time, she thought it was the certified nurse assistant.
She thought it was. And then she came to the meeting and realized it was all about data.
Too many acronyms in our system.
So here's the big overview of our current proposed budget. And if you take a look here, this is that under three percent increase in expenditures we talked about. Here's where we look at the tax request under six percent, at five point eight nine percent. I'm just gonna kind of zip through. If you have questions, just stop me. We talked about the budget development decisions. This has also been part of our one pager. Again, remember, our goal this year was to simplify language, make it more readable and digestible, more jargon-free, while also trying to take a positive light on where we are, even in the midst of a challenging budget year. So here's our investments for the year and the reductions that we've made. We also have highlighted what this budget allows us to do. We wanted to give people a reason to come out and vote for the budget, kind of switching the narrative. Instead of feeling up, instead of focusing on what we're taking away from the budget, we developed a bare bones budget from the gate, going as minimum as we could and still feel like we were, you know, being professional, professionally responsible and providing the type of program that our students need. But also wanting people to say like, oh, that's something I've been looking forward to. And then we've made the list of what's not in this budget. This is how we're categorizing these as unmet needs, in the hopes that people would be saying, oh, I want that thing in the budget. I've really been wanting to have someone at the transportation office when I call in the afternoons. Let's add that back in. I don't know that this will be the year for that, but that's the shift that we're trying to make, is coming out as, you know, as bare bones with our essential budget, and then talking about what could we add to it, or what do we need to take away as we understand the fiscal reality in town.
I think, Julie, it also allows us to prep people's minds for the coming years, because typically, from year to year, when the leadership council gets together and talks about budget, a lot of the same things come up again and again. Sometimes need shift, sometimes, you know, a priority shift. But in a lot of cases, the need that we didn't fill this year is gonna be the same need that comes up to us next year. So it's sort of a heads up.
And these are both really good examples. The transportation position has been a need for a number of years. And the career pathways, interned specialists, the title's a little different than it was last year, but it's the same, it's to the same end. It's meeting those career and education development standards that are required by the state of Maine.
Could I make a, just a comment, Julie?
Sure.
That, for me, that development director, I just feel like that could be a revenue-neutral position.
On the next slide?
Yeah, on the next slide. I just, I personally just feel really strongly that that, you know, yes, it's money that we'd have to spend, but I just feel like, I think you'd be able to get the grants to cover the position.
That's a typical way that development positions are filled.
Or to do it, I just wonder, could you do it as a stipend position? Because that would reduce, then you wouldn't have to do benefits. And, you know, I just wondered if that was a.
Yeah, that's an interesting thing to think about. We could talk with Mike Legage more about that. And Mike, feel free to jump in if I'm, if I'm misrepresenting. But Mike's proposal, this is something he's been proposing for a number of years. And as we all know, our booster groups, we have over thirty-two, I think thirty-two last time I counted, booster groups generate anywhere from three to five hundred thousand dollars a year in supplemental funds, as Jody Shea noted earlier, that supplement our programming in ways of assisting coaches or essential equipment. The football boosters, as you know, Leanne, fund, you know, equipment replacement, safety, you know, safety equipment, uniforms, all kinds of things that are, we wouldn't be able to run the programs without our boosters. And managing all of those funds is a big job. I mean, that's a lot of money. It's not a small amount of money that we're talking about. And so we've made some efforts over the, or made some gains with Mike Legage's effort and Joanne and Kate to, you know, refine the booster process and the bookkeeping of the booster group process. But there's more work that could be done. And really, we think about this as, how is this taxing our community? We have so many great businesses in our community that support this group, and that 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 group, and here comes another group. And we would, we think that we could, you know, gain some efficiencies in terms of generating funds with a position like this as well. And, you know, also seeking grants wasn't necessarily what this position was fully designed for. But I think we're always trying to find creative funding sources. So having somebody who's thinking about this all the time would be really beneficial to our organization.
And I just wonder if it could be shared with the town? Because I think the, on the town side, there's also grants, you know, available. But I just, I just think that's, that could really help, in my mind.
Yeah, yeah, I agree.
And I just wanted to ask about the additional support for 504s and behavior. There's no amount there. Are you thinking of an ed tech here? I mean, that particular one strikes a note with me, because it's really significant to not have that extra help for those kinds of issues right there. And so, do you have a dollar amount on that? And what are we gonna do for those situations that are sitting in those classrooms every day without that? How are we gonna cover that? How does that end up getting covered?
So we're thinking really hard about that, too. And we didn't price it out here, just knowing that it wasn't going to be something that we could ask for this year. But we wanted to put the ask on the table, so people are starting to think about it. And it, could it be an ed tech? The answer to that is simply no. This has to be someone who either has an administrative license or is pursuing an administrative license so that they could oversee these types of things. And so the challenge that we have at Wentworth and at the middle school is that these, these schools are large schools. We have over seven hundred, I think seven hundred and fifteen or seventeen kids at the middle school, and close to seven hundred at Wentworth. And so they're, it's really too big of a student population for two administrators, but it's not really large enough to justify a third administrator, like we have at the high school. And so, right now, what happens at the middle school, well, at the high school, right now, Mike Legage, the athletic director, covers some 504s, along with one of the other assistant principals, covers a lot of the 504s. At the middle school, Jake Brown, who is a stipended middle school athletic director, he does a lot of the behavioral supports and/or eligibility supports for students. And so he's created a really great program that allows, allows us, or him really, as a full-time teacher, he also monitors athletes and their academic progress or their behavioral progress, so that before they become ineligible, he's providing intervention plans so that they can get back on track and become successful before they're in that consequential stage of being ineligible. And he, what we're not able to do, it's a lot for him to do, and he's managing that well. I don't know how, but he is. And, but we're not able to do, provide the same supports for students who are in extracurricular clubs. And we would like to be able to, because we think that, you know, in the name of equity, all students should have access to that, that support. So we're gonna keep thinking about this and see, is there a way we can start to do some of this work with existing resources, but want to just keep an eye on the need, particularly as, you know, behavioral needs are changing for students, and there's more and more supports and individual plans, and safety care plans, and things like that are needing to be put in place. So we haven't quantified an actual FTE or dollar amount for that this year.
So to me, this is no small need. This, this is very significant. And I think our community needs to be aware of it. Whenever we have the opportunity to be out there in the public, talking about what this is. Because those 504s, okay, so that, that's something that kids who fall outside of special ed, but who still has some need, some kind of need, to make their education possible equal to a regular ed kid. So it's not a special ed student, but there is something going on there.
It's a civil rights act.
Yes.
504s is a civil rights.
I mean, it could be an emotional issue. It could be a temporary issue. It could be a medical kind of a thing that, that needs some kind of change in the school day for that kid. And so when you look at those extracurricular activities, so what I hear the superintendent saying is that, yeah, maybe we're providing that in the regular ed classroom for the regular subject areas. It's not being provided. When that child goes to music, or PE, or somewhere else in the building, to the library, the support is not going to be there. Or they're trying to Band-Aid patch by using people who already have a full-time job
What actually happens, not to interrupt you, but what actually happens is that means that it's the principal and the assistant principal who are picking that up. We're never not providing the service that a student needs. But it means that the principals and the assistant principals aren't providing the support to teachers in the classroom in terms of, you know, feedback on evaluations. And they're spending a lot of their time behind closed doors, you know, managing the individual student needs, whether it be behavioral supports, or 504s, or IEPs, and things like that. And that's just really the nature of the job of a, of a school principal. It doesn't really look like it did ten years ago, or, you know, even five years ago, with all the third balancing right now. So we're watching that closely and monitoring enrollment. And as we get into more of a data mindset, looking at, how can we really quantify that need by tracking some data and looking at, how many hours are spent at? How many, how much, how many administrative hours does it take to support one student with a 504 between meetings and planning and things like that? How much time is spent supporting students to ensure that they're eligible for extracurriculars? So we look forward to coming back with more data about these things, too.
Donna, Julie? I can tell you from personal experience that specialists sits as the physical education, art, music teachers, often have a different perspective on a student. I've known students who really didn't like physical education at all, but excelled in art, or excelled in music. I'm talking about youngsters now. Both, and then at the high school, it's the same thing. You get a different perspective on a student. And if you work with. same thing. You get a different perspective on a student. And if you work with the principal and you work with the classroom teacher and you, and the classroom teacher can point out to a student that they can learn math through their art or their music or their physical education. And we worked very hard at that when I was up on Munjoy Hill, which at the time was a poverty school. And, and the teachers worked collaboratively. I think that probably is going on in Scarborough, but it's never been emphasized. And, and specialists have, as I say, see children in a different light and see some positive skills that are not apparent in the classroom. And if we can emphasize that in our schools and work together to improve a child's learning through the special programs that we offer, it gives us a leg up. It also gives us another teacher who may, can make a positive impact on the child's life.
Okay, so this slide may look familiar to you because we saw this one on April 5th. And the point of having this in the presentation on April 5th was that during the first reading of the budget, there are lots of items that are impactful to the bottom line, but that we don't really have necessarily complete information on yet. That's true just because of the timeline of the budget development process. We have to have a first reading before we have all the answers. So this slide is what you saw on April 5th. We identified a number of areas where we knew that we had items in motion and where we would be getting more information as we went through the budget process. Julie, if you want to click us to the next slide. This slide is a little bit sad because if you remember from what you just saw, we budgeted projected Anthem rates at a five percent increase, which was the average of the past four years and a good guess. It wasn't a great guess, however, because we now have Anthem rates. They came in a couple of weeks ago and they are in at seven point two percent increase, which means that the budget overall, the cost of benefits for all the employees in the Scarborough School Department needs to be increased by a hundred and ten thousand dollars. Delta Dental, same problem. We budgeted it at a plus one percent and we came in at a plus three point two percent. And...
Kate, sorry, is that, so is that an increase of a hundred and ten thousand from what you projected at five percent or from last year?
From what I projected at five percent. It's an add to, oh, and here, let me pass these around as I'm talking because I don't know if you remember, last year, we had these sort of process worksheets that people seemed to find helpful. So I've started one of those for the budget process for this year. At the top of this page, you'll see the budget as it was presented at first reading. In the middle of the page, you'll see stuff that's happened, pluses and minuses. And then at the bottom, you'll see what that does to the bottom line. I want to make, make it clear that this doesn't mean that this is our new budget, that this is what the board has agreed to or anybody's agreed to. All this represents is things that we've learned since we had the first reading and changes that we need to take into account before the second reading and figure out what we need to do about those. So to continue going through, we do have some reductions. They're not as great as Anthem. Anthem is one of our biggest costs. But we were able to reduce our projection for workers' comp premiums by about thirty-four thousand dollars. We also found, I didn't find it, but some of our, my colleagues and, and some of our citizens found a really ugly mistake in one of my calculations. There were five benefit lines that pulled an extra column in and double counted something. So that, I was actually delighted to find out that there was a thirty-two thousand dollar mistake. And obviously, I needed a proofreader, but I'm grateful for the mistake. We would have caught it on the second round, but we'll take it now. We're happy to take it. Change in retirement projections is just a little amount. And what that means is that folks have, they've advised us that they intend to retire. And for most of those people who've been with the district long enough, there's a retirement payout, which is in the teacher's contract. It's also in the support staff contract. And it has a dollar value. It's equivalent to thirty days of unused sick time at their per diem rate. So at January 1st, folks are supposed to tell us whether they have an intent to retire at the end of the year. If they do so, then we'll budget for that retirement stipend based on their actual pay rate. So when you see change in retirement projections, what that means is that we had a couple of people who weren't sure. And we went ahead and we put the money in the budget and then they said, well, actually, we're not, we've changed our mind. We're not going. The reason that it's not thousands and thousands of dollars is that we also take a guess at what the reduction in a salary is going to be for a person at the top of the scale who's leaving. So in the original projection, we're taking the person who's going to retire and we're assuming that we're going to hire someone cheaper because most of the time, we don't go out and get someone at the very top of the salary scale when someone retires. So that's a long way around of saying that we've come up with a little bit of a change based on actual human beings and their plans for the coming year. The total change, and you can see it on the sheet, which I went and handed them all out, so no, I don't have them. You'll see on the, on the middle of the sheet that there's one bar of green. That's the change, the general fund. And then with Anthem, Delta, and work comp, we're also making little changes to both the Delta Ed and school nutrition because those have people in them, too. So I broke that out for you. And then at the bottom of the page and on the next slide, it's going to tell you what that does to our bottom line. And again, we're not saying that this is our new budget or that this is what's going to be voted on come May 16 or 17. This is what these changes do without any other consideration to the bottom line.
And if, if the state doesn't, if the legislature does not reconvene?
We won't have any subsidy either, right?
Well, we won't have an increase in subsidy.
I'm sort of concerned that we won't get anything because they haven't appropriated the funds.
They're going to appropriate, they'll have to appropriate something because it's the law, but...
Doesn't it, does it fall back to whatever the appropriation was from last year?
I don't know what the legal ramification of that is. I think that even though there's a two-year budget, they have to pass an appropriation bill that funds it for the second year. So I'm not sure what it means, whether they fund it at this level or this level, you know, where, where it falls if they don't do that. I believe they have every intent of doing it. I don't know if they'll be successful, though, Jackie, there...
No, I don't know. There is speculation that, that they will be called back next Wednesday, but that hasn't happened yet. And it's my understanding that it's the increase that had been proposed that has not been voted on, that if, if they don't reconvene, that...
Then they would keep it up.
That it would be at the level that we received this year.
That would be a tough one to...
I read the letter. It almost seemed like it was saying that it wouldn't happen until I first either, like that, or maybe just that amount wouldn't be coming until I first.
I don't, you know, I asked Steve about it last night and he said they're hour by hour at the moment.
I did send an email to my state department. I sent an email to my state rep asking, you know, hoping that they would...
Give us a, a little heads up about what's going on.
Before we leave that page, it came up at one of the sessions, and I don't remember which one it was at, that this came up. But about that adult ed budget, you can speak to it now or later, but that was a specific question. And I think it would help to hear from any one of you a little bit more about the adult ed budget because there's a misunderstanding in the community about what the heck that is all about because I think there's a idea of something that was adult ed twenty years ago, thirty years ago. And so that, can, can Joanne or somebody?
Well, that is one of our departments.
Oh, you got one on the page.
Can we wait until we get to that?
Sure, yeah, you can. I just didn't want to forget it.
It is one of our departments coming up.
Okay.
Joanne's going to tell us all why we need that.
Any other questions?
Yeah. And again, I've said this three times, so you can kick me, but this is not the final budget. This is what we have to work with, what's been input in our laps now. And so there's going to be some decisions to be made. And those decisions will be made between our finance committee, our full board, and the town council finance committee and their board. That's why all those upcoming meetings are going to be really important.
Can I ask another question? As far as like the negotiations that are still in motion, so in your budget, do you kind of pad it with a little bit, kind of knowing there's going to be some kind of increase or?
We do.
Okay, I just didn't know.
Typically with negotiations that are open, the way that we typically budget is to assume that the expiring salary table or wage table or whatever it is will continue and that the existing staff will move up a step if that's what would happen on the existing table. We don't assume because we can't really guess about any drastic changes in the way the tables are built. And then we add, depending on what we're hearing from negotiating committee and from the SCA, we'll add a little bit of a cola in there so that we have room for good faith bargaining and for an opportunity to let you folks have your conversations. Now, that said, if you have gone into negotiations and you have, for example, you know, you've already got some agreements, you've got some kinds of decisions that have been made, right, tentative agreement, TAs, or, then we can always refine our projections. We can say, well, actually, we know now that it's going to be this. And then we can go back and change that. It's nice if that timing happens before we pass the budget. It doesn't usually work that way, but it has been in the past.
Good question.
Are there talks?
The next slide is the questions and wonderings. Is that what, are we, is that what we're...
Are we doing questions and wondering?
Trying to stick to the rules.
Nice job.
So I saw that...
Oh, my God, we've been doing them without the notepaper.
No, they click, you sing that paper.
And waiting patiently like I'm supposed to.
I just didn't click the slide.
So I just had a question about the Anthem rate. And I think it said this year it went up seven point two percent. Wasn't it, what was it last year? Just to demonstrate how it varies so crazy.
Oh, I'm sorry, the, the Anthem rates?
Yeah, it wasn't, it wasn't surprise.
Last year was, yeah, was tiny. I'll get the, the numbers for you while we go through here.
Less than two.
Yeah. And so it just shows you that it's, you know, we, we take five years as an average and that comes up to five percent. But literally last year, twelve months ago, it was one point two. And now this year it's, or whatever, it's one point, whatever. And this year it's seven point two. So it's so hard to gauge.
Yeah, it's really up and down. And, and you know, having listened to me whine about this before, that I really prefer as an conservative budgeter to budget high and then, and then cheer mightily when it goes down. And this year, we tried a different strategy and we tried to be, you know, as, as lean as we possibly could going in. And this is unfortunately, you know, the risk that we took. Let me see if I have it right here.
I mean, you can get back to me. I just, that was just...
No, it's a good question.
But to that point, that's why when we talk about the first reading, it's such a challenging conversation. And it really is just to get us started, to have the conversation. Because if we were to come, and it's hard, too, because sometimes those first numbers stick in people's minds, right? And so this year, we really wanted to come in with the lowest numbers we could. So we budgeted a little bit differently, not as conservatively as Kate would want to. So we could get below that three and six. And then now you're forcing...
Right. But I mean, I, I, you know, you don't know. It's a five percent guess seems, I, I was sort of optimistic, knowing last year it was less than two. So you just don't know. So I feel like a five-year look back seems reasonable.
Seems rational, right? Yeah. And unfortunately, the, you can see the curve. I just pulled it up here. From 2013 to 2014, it was eight percent. From 14 to 15, it was five percent. From 15 to 16, it was zero point nine percent. 16 to 17, an adjustment, eight point eight one percent. And last year was one point two one. So, you know, you're, you can talk about averages, but the way that Anthem actually produces their rates doesn't flow that way. It's really all based on their loss experience. And that fluctuates because we're all human beings and we all get sick and, and cost things at different rates.
Apparently all in the same year.
Apparently all at once.
And does, Kate, does that make you say, oh, we need to look into other insurance plans? Like, is there, is there a percentage increase at a point where you say, okay, maybe we need to check about other ones? I didn't know what that process is.
We would love to. And that's something that I could give you a little seminar about. But we can't escape Anthem because of their relationship with the MEA Benefits Trust and because all of our retirees are linked into the plan. And so our demographic is just not very attractive to any other insurers. So there have been opportunities and willingness to go out into the market and look for other insurance. But it's just been, it's not, we're not attractive to other insurers.
I think it was like five years ago, we did a health insurance study.
What, five? Would that, what?
Five, five years ago.
Five or six years ago?
We did a health insurance study. And they didn't want to look at us after they saw our, our numbers and so forth.
But do other insurance companies not have those crazy dips and...
I don't really know whether there would be less volatility.
We might be jumping into the same issue that we have now.
No, I don't know if there would be less volatility. I think that you're right in that, you know, the whole insurance market is kind of wacky. But it would be nice to be able to shop around from year to year. But with the way that it's structured, with the...
MEA.
MEA retirees being linked to the individual school units, it's, we're really just not that interesting to insurance companies. Our demographic, our demographic shifts vary.
I was going to say, ten years ago, maybe we negotiated with the, with our administrative group to have the health insurance from Maine Municipal Association. And it was less expensive. But we found, number one, they, under that plan at that time, they had to pay everything upfront and then get reimbursed. It didn't cover mammograms. And there were other items like that that were not covered under that plan. And even though we had a three-year contract, we reopened the contract and, and took our administrators back to Anthem because it was just costing them so much money. And it wasn't covering everything that needed to be covered.
Any other questions? Anyone else wondering about anything? Anyone noticing anything? Oh, yeah, noticing.
We have two minutes.
Oh.
You have two minutes.
We went over by one or two minutes. Joanne's going to use them. She needs, she needs the tour.
All right. So health services, you know, health services, ten years ago was extremely different than it is today. Our, our health, our school nurses are working with medical needs and emotional needs of our students. But some of the things that we feel really good about is that over the last three years, we have increased our flu clinics in the school. And more and more kids are participating and staff. We do a lot of training for our staff and first responders. For first responders, we're looking at all the office staff in our schools, the bus drivers. And that training for CPR is done with them.
And that's done every year.
Every year. Every year before school starts, we have that training. One of the big things is that, you know, we wanted to go digital for many years, I would say for the last six years. And we finally did last year, started the process, have a health office anywhere system. And it has made, I think, a big difference in getting information to parents, notifying them. All of our records are now kept, I shouldn't say all. Many of the records are now kept as we've done the transition and the entering of the information. And the nurses are, have worked really hard to learn this new management system. So what are our challenges? Well, if you look on page thirty-five of your book, school nursing is extremely different. The number of concussions, the medical needs that kids have. A student comes in with a concussion, the nurse is doing a plan and then working with the teachers on what that plan is and what does the, what does the student need and following up and and so forth. Students who have diabetes... Students who have diabetes are in the clinic, being managed by them. And then just do all the other help, healthcare that kids need today, and medical issues that they might have. You know, a student breaks their ankle, the support that they need from the nurse, the nurse corresponding with the parent. So it really has become a very different job than what it was 10 years ago for them. Sometimes they'll say, you know, a new student is coming in with this, and I'm like, what the heck is that? And they're trying to explain it to me, but it's, there's a lot of needs out there. And I think they do a really good job because we do not have a nurse in all of our schools. They have to cover for each other, and so we have schedules. Where are the kids that need those services every single day? Some have to travel here and there and split that, so it does get complicated for them.
But they also play a really critical role in our policy development.
Yes, they were very good this year. We have Narcan, they've all been trained again with Narcan, that's gonna be coming into the school. They work with the different policies on medical marijuana with you. And so they are, and they do a lot with our health and wellness for students and staff and the wellness committee. I know several of them work with Kate for a district-wide wellness committee.
And our pre-K committee, too.
Yes.
Pre-K health and safety advisory team.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's remarkable. I mean, you say you hired a school nurse, and we're all thinking, you know, Band-Aids and aspirin, and the level of medical interventions that they do daily with kids. And then they also find time to help out with staff and with some of these organizational pieces. They're just remarkable people.
And I have to say, you know, students who are in need, you know, they'll reach out to Project Grace, they'll have clothing, you know, they really go that extra, what are your needs? Not just medical, you know, but some of the physical needs, you know, student needs clothing or stuff like that, they're right there with them.
The, um, I'm gonna write a student.
Am I allowed to say?
No.
Write another sheet, and then we get to the wonderings.
Write another sheet.
Okay, so we're going to adult ed. What is adult ed today? We, our program at Scarborough High School, I would say, nine years ago, we did a lot of credit recovery for high school students.
What page is that, Joanne?
Sixty-seven.
Fifty-seven?
Sixty-seven.
Sixty-seven?
Thank you.
Ten years ago, they did, adult ed did a lot of credit recovery. Students who were failing, coming in, taking that class, and they could graduate on time, doing a lot of GEE work so that students who decided they didn't want to finish high school could come back and take their GE. And over the last, I'd say, five or six years, we really have looked at workforce development. And the workforce development has been with CNAs, the Certified Nurse Assistance, that I'm familiar with. But our director has worked with numerous nursing facilities in the area of Piper Shores, Maine Veterans Home, Genesis, she's gone into Portland, and we have offered Pine Point Nursing, Scarborough Terrace, we've offered these CNA programs, and many of them have gotten jobs there. I think last year, we had a rate of about 47 who became CNAs in one year. And so that's 47 people who were able to obtain jobs. Another one that we started was a Certified Residential Medication Aid. This is a new, it was a program that also to give out medication. It was big with Piper Shores because they're adding a whole new facility and are looking for people to do the medication. They have medical billing, pharmacy tech, a pro bono technician. Those programs are also offered through our adult ed program. English language learners, we had a few people, and we were looking, how can we increase that? And Joan Trembreth, who is the director, started working with Portland Public Schools and the Portland Adult Ed Program, and they had an overflow, and they weren't able. And so she has many of them from Portland coming for day and evening classes that she is offering. And so that has helped tremendously. And then college and career counseling is offered to adults who decide they want to go back to college. They haven't started college, they need to take an Accuplacer to get to Southern Maine community, so they come in and she will help them prepare for the Accuplacer, give the online testing. So when they get over there, they've already done some of the pre-work. And then the credit recovery for students and adult high school diplomas. That new program, it's not called the GED anymore, it's called HISA. And we have people who work individually with people who want to get their high school diploma. And then we have an enrichment portion of adult ed that is just, you want to learn how to play guitar, you want to learn something about gardening, we've done some things on environmental. And they offer over 100 different classes through the enrichment program.
On May 2nd, there's a civil discourse class by the American League of Women Voters. We'll be at the budget hearing, but I know there's some people in town who are passionate about that initiative, so that's out there, too. It's like $5 or $10.
Okay, can we do the next one? Transportation. This one, we've had a lot of discussions this year through transportation. But again, to just keep in mind how big Scarborough is and how many miles a year our buses are doing. I always love, I keep on using the same thing because I hope it will stick. It's like traveling around the world, approximately 25,000 miles. Therefore, you could travel around the world 18 times annually. That's how big Scarborough is, okay? We provide training to new drivers who are successful in attaining the CDL. We have trained, I'd have to say maybe five people now. There is a new protocol with the state in that they have to do so many hours of classroom sitting before they can get their CDL license. And so we have now started that program with drivers, and Sarah and our trainer are working with people. We have them come in. Sometimes, you know, getting a CDL license is not, I have to say, probably not the easiest thing to do. And people, I think, sometimes are shocked at the difficulty of the questions. And so working with them and learning the language for the CDL language also has helped them. Our bus drivers have been engaged in very caring projects for students, are looking out for them. If they notice that a student is, you know, not smiling, doesn't seem happy, they might just go in and tell Sarah, and she might make a little quick phone call to the school and just say, you know, the bus driver noticed something today, maybe someone should talk to them. I know that one of our bus drivers, I was, one of our, we've done the suicide awareness training with everybody, and last year, one of our bus drivers had a concern about a student and immediately let us know, and we were able to get the students some help. And so having everyone trained in those kind of, and being aware, was very helpful. Our challenge is finding and hiring qualified drivers is always gonna be a challenge, but I think we have five people new since January. And, you know, I'm interviewing another person next week, so we're really getting up there.
We're on a little bit of a streak right now.
Yeah, we're, we've just been, yeah, I've gone somewhere, no.
Don't jinx it.
No, no. Our unmet needs, you know, the .75 for the support for the transportation department, just have another person down there if someone had to drive, so it's not, so it can be into the phone and be responsive. The GPS installation, that's a lot of money. And you know, when we're ready to make that kind of commitment of over 150,000, you know, then I think we should look at that, but right now, it's a lot of money. We are able to put cameras in our buses. We have probably four to eight cameras in every bus, and that's through a grant. And so that has been helpful. Now, questions?
I have some questions about adult ed. Does adult ed pay for itself? What's the revenue?
Adult ed has just under $100,000 contribution from the town. And it's about $188,000 budget. And that's been pretty steady for as long as I've been building budgets. There was a $90,000 contribution back when I first started doing this. So we haven't increased it, but we haven't eliminated it either. And I think that, you know, the original investment on the part of the school department and the town is just in understanding the value of that program to the community. So it's not revenue.
So any increases have come from us offering more, because the state gives us the rest of the money? Okay? Joanne?
I'm glad you asked that question because that's exactly what came up at that meeting from people as to why, why would we pay anything for that?
Well, yeah.
In other words, the thinking is, is that where you got it from, too? Did you have that question at any of the forums you went to?
Well, yeah, I have one, and this is my second question. I had a similar question, which was, why do we offer the same adult education services as Saco and, you know, all our surrounding towns, when my understanding is that you can go to any one of them? So that was, like, are there-
It's more community-based. Some programs don't have the CNA program, and so what they are trying to do is put them into clusters such as a regional service center idea. So they might, they're working on five different adult ed programs that are gonna be in a cluster. And from that cluster, they're going to look at what kind of programs they're offering. But a lot of times, people, like, people can't, don't have a car.
Right.
So in order for them to get to the high school, they might be able to do that in the town where they are. And that's what we've found. Some of the CNAs are from Scarborough, you know.
I think it'll be, it'll be interesting to see how adult ed morphs over time.
Yeah.
Because it really has gone, as Joanne said earlier, it's gone from a program that really was, you know, fun, cool, enrichment things, and then supports for our high school kids, which is why it's based in the high school, which is why it has been traditionally founded as a, as a school program. And it's changed now into much more of a community-based program, and much more of an adult opportunity for, you know, employment and, you know, and for bettering themselves as citizens.
And also the link to a community college system, which Maine was really lacking 10 years ago on a community college system. And now, you know, a lot of people are doing the community college route, and the adult ed programs is becoming a link to get there.
Getting through the, what do we call this, the prerequisites for-
The prerequisites, the Accuplacer that they all have to take before they get into that community college system.
If you have any language deficiencies, that you take an ELL class, and then you can be placed in a community college. So I mean, it's a fair question, why is that K-12 education obligation? It's not really, but traditionally, it has been, and it's grown out of our systems. And so, you know, it's really open to interpretation, what value that adds in the community.
What is the requirement from the state for us to have adult education?
We're not required to have it. They provide subsidy for the academic programming that we provide, and also for the workforce programming.
And how many people do we employ in this?
One and a half.
So the one is part-time position as a director?
Part-time director.
Halftime?
Halftime.
Halftime director.
Is it halftime?
It's really, Joanne, we don't really have an FTE for her, but I think she'd probably equate to a half-time and then a .8 administrative assistant.
And then the people who do the CNA, so for instance, some of the nursing facilities will say, I'll give you the instructor if you get the students.
If you put the program together and get the students and take the money and, yeah.
Or they will say, if they have people who are working at their facility who want to become CNAs, they will pay for the CNA.
They'll pay the tuition.
About $1,000 to become a CNA, so they might pay for that.
Okay.
Okay, so, yeah, right.
Do we have a continuing relationship with Comfort Keepers still?
Yes.
Yeah? Has that gone well?
That's gone well.
There's a number of the, of Comfort Keepers as one, but then some of the nursing homes as well that we have collaborations in. And it's a, it's a, I think it's a fabulous program. I don't know if it's really, really strictly our purview. And that's, you know, again, that's a topic for debate. But this is how it's grown, and, you know, we're, we've been committed to keeping it successful and whether the town wants to continue to invest in it is an open question.
I have to say, every time we have a graduation for the CNAs or for someone who has gone back to school to get their high school degree, for me, knowing a lot of kids who have come through the school system, and there's been many of them who have come back, done the CNA program, or someone who, you know, didn't finish high school but decided at 30, I better go get a high school diploma. And, you know, they'll show up with their family. It's really very rewarding to see that.
It's still individualized pathways, it's just a little longer term.
Yes, yes.
Now, I've gone to those graduations over the past three or four years, and it's worth it for you to go to that graduation. It's usually a little ceremony in the high school in one room.
Yep, we try to make it, you know, they're getting a high school diploma, and we want to make sure that they have a cap and gown and do it.
It's all ages and the whole income levels, and so when you see that, and like Joanne said, if, you know, if there's a 45-year-old person there saying, I'm getting my high school diploma, something I've always wanted.
It's very touching because when they show up, like I said, with their family.
Their children sometimes.
Yeah, and their children, we're so proud of them for at that age to go back and get a high school diploma.
I have a question about the outside districts. If we're taking in their students, do we get any revenue for that?
Yep, yeah, that's exactly, when she heard that Portland had an overflow and couldn't meet their needs, we took that on because then we will be using, we'll get credit for them through the state, so we do.
And all of the programs are tuitioned, so it's not like K-12 education. So if you want to take a class, it might be $5, or it might be $1,000, depending on what you're taking. But they are all tuitioned, so that's why there is a revenue source apart from town funding.
Great. I have some busing questions, transportation questions. How are we anticipating that going from three-tier busing to two-tier busing is going to change? Are fuel needs, or, you know, anything along those lines?
Well, we definitely know there's going to be route efficiencies. So I don't know that we've calculated that out specifically yet, but we can do some baseline calculations and report back on that, like after the first semester or so, so that we can monitor that and keep a watchful eye.
Can I just follow up on the bus? Are we gonna do buses, too?
I was gonna ask a question on buses, but go ahead.
Oh, oh, okay. I just wanted, do we have the, you know, the amount of bus drivers that we need now then? Right now, we're full?
And Sarah's working on the updated first-stop pickup, last-stop drop-off schedule. And she'll be able to also, I believe, report out the incremental. So, you know, the first pickup might be at 8 o'clock, the next one at 8:05, or 8:03. She's been working on that this week.
Yeah.
So there's 19 drivers? And we have 19 right now?
We have 19 now, we're up to 21. We have two more when that, when that was published.
Oh, and what did, sorry, what did we, what's in the, what's in the-
Budget?
Budget for next year?
22, I think.
22 drivers, okay. And we like to have-
22 is our-
22 is like our sweet spot, okay.
Joanne, couple of questions. Number one, how many of the buses actually have GPS?
None.
None.
None. Zero. Zero.
I thought that you had said at one time that when we bought new buses, we have been putting in the GPS.
No, cameras.
And the safety checks.
Well, I knew the cameras, yeah, okay, so none of the buses have GPS.
No.
How many of the buses are using alternative fuel?
Uh, that's a cake.
Oh, that's a good question. I need Jane Aysen to, you know, to-
Well, approximately half, a third.
No, it's not that many. It's probably, I don't know if it's four or six. And we brought propane buses with EPA grants. And we were, you know, trying to leverage funding and also be ecologically forward-thinking. The difficulty that's arisen, two things. One is that the public works folks have found that the propane buses are a little harder to work on. They're a little less easy to maintain. But the big question for us has been that there are not propane fueling stations as widely spread as we would like them to be, so we're limited in where we can take those vehicles. So if you need to, you know, do a round trip to Bangor, you probably won't send a propane bus. And so that's been the biggest thing that's held us back from switching to alternative energy because that infrastructure isn't out there.
Kate, are there limitations to the propane buses in the winter months as well?
We had some issues in the beginning with them, starting because of the nature of the fuel, the liquid fuel, but they did overcome those, they figured out how to make that work. So they don't have that issue so much. It's really, the biggest deficit, I think, is just that, similar to electric cars, you know, there's, there's just not that nationwide infrastructure that's been built yet to support having those alternative fuel vehicles out there. built yet to support having those alternative fuel vehicles out there in, on a grand scale.
And the maintenance aside, are they more, I know they're more efficient, is it less expensive?
Right now, there's a fuel rebate from the Veds for propane fuel. Without the rebate, they are more expensive, because the propane fuel retail is actually higher cost than diesel.
But it's, I thought it was more...
But it's subsidized by the Fed.
I thought...
They're more fuel-efficient if they're less fuel. I, I don't know if I could do a dollar-for-dollar comparison on the vehicles, but I think it's probably pretty much of a wash, where the higher cost, the rebate, and the more fuel efficiency equals out to the diesel.
But the point I'm trying to make too, for the public, is that we're doing everything possible to try and make, become an efficient running organization, and it includes our buses.
Yeah, and I, I agree with Julie that we'll be able to tell pretty early on, you know, in the fall, with the two-tier bus system, what kind of mileage we're getting, because we do get a lot of good data off the vehicles every month. We get reports about the fuel usage, and we get reports about the mileage. It'll become pretty clear to us how that's trending. Whether, you know, bus fuel costs themselves will stay stable was another question, but at least the efficiency will be there.
Another thing that the public needs to be aware of as you are speaking is that with, with the mechanic at the town garage and with the way that, that he keeps, or the town maintenance staff keeps track of our costs, and how Todd keeps track of the cost of fuels, and, and all of those things, all of the data that is collected on a weekly, monthly, annual basis, so that we can budget efficiently, is sometimes not known, you know. It's, we have good people doing good jobs, trying to keep our costs as, as slim as possible.
Well, and energy costs are notoriously volatile, which the public knows because they pay them as well.
Twenty cents a gallon, it's gone up twenty cents a gallon this week from last week.
Yeah. And, you know, one of the things that we do, to Jackie's point, is one of the things we do is we try to lock in on contracts with fuel, so that we can have at least consistency in budgeting and, DataWise Time?
DataWise Time.
The second thing is that Todd puts in energy-efficient equipment whenever he can, and he'd want me to say that, so.
What happens if, well, what happens if there's no more rebate for that propane?
For the propane fuel?
Right.
That's why we haven't bought any more of them.
Okay.
Well, no, actually. There's a number of reasons, but I think...
We had nine at one time, so now we're down to four.
Got it.
Okay, school nutrition. As you know, the last three years, we've had a shared service with Cape Elizabeth, it's worked out extremely well. The staff has gone through intensive training, there's a whole different approach in the kitchens of cooking, using fresh produce, does a lot with Bi-Local in, in this area. We were just talking today about the summer lunch program and how to increase some things with summer lunch for kids through community service. This year, parents are going to be able to use the, I never know the name of the online system, to pay instead of sending in money during the summer. They can just use their student's account, which will make it a lot easier for parents and for, you know, and for the community service and the food service department. But we were talking about what we could offer for food in the summer. There's going to be a middle school program, and the middle school program, middle school kids love the sandwich bar, and so they're going to be doing something like that every day, having a à la carte and sandwich bar for middle school kids who are participating in the community service summer program. So it's going to have another, new look to it and some à la carte items for the middle school kids, and the middle school kids will come over to Webwork and have lunch there and so forth. As you know, the community, the Community Thanksgiving Dinner has been a huge success. We've done that two years in a row, and Peter has really done an excellent job, along with his staff, in organizing it and preparing the food. This year, he did a Valentine's Day dance. It was, they helped do the food for that. The Backrack Program is their, you know, program, weekly support, school vacations. They're even doing some students on a daily basis right now to help them out. Over 2,200 meals per day are produced, and we're really proud of what they've done. Central Office.
We're looking at each other like, who's in Central Office? I don't know anybody who works there.
All right, well, so one of the things that we've been working on since last year and into this year is trying to generate some more creative funding sources through community partnerships. So this year, we started this Red Storm debit card with Saco Bitiput Savings. We won't have the numbers for that yet until September, but all of that, remember, all of the, the money's generated from every swipe or however they're going to end up calculating. I think they're trying to see sort of how many touches there are this, you know, throughout this year before they generate, you know, cost per swipe or how they'll allocate that. But that all goes towards the nutrition program as well. And so, and the other, the other thing that we did, we have a local realtor in town, a young entrepreneur, Matt Bowlerice and his fiancee Tori live in town, and they, they recently moved back to town. Matt is a Scarborough grad, and he also is a member of our community business partnership. They own the New England Realty Group, and they have done, committed to donating, they made, I think, a $500 initial donation, and then they committed to donating 5% of every, of the commission from every home they represent in Scarborough, and an additional 1%, 1% if it's a faculty member. And so they have been giving us those checks as they make, have those successful transactions. And they continue to support our schools in other ways as well, in terms of sharing their expertise and their knowledge and their relevance. I think, you know, they're a young, smart, hard-working couple who wants to give back to their community, and I think it's something that's very common of millennials. And he's also been involved with the internship program. I know that Kristy Zabaznik had him come out to the high school and speak to students directly. They're really passionate about teaching students and adults about debt and credit and college debt, and that really comes from their experience as realtors and, you know, sitting down with people at closing time, whereas they try to finance homes and realizing what they do and don't know about their own credit. So he's passionate about that. They're both passionate about that as well, and they also, Tori has a five, a five-year-old who's in kindergarten at Blue Point, so they're really invested in our community, and those are the kinds of partnerships we want to develop. Partners who share our values, who are invested in our vision and want to give back. Discover Ed Foundation continues to be awesome in supporting innovation grants for our teachers. This year, up at, by the time we created this slide, we had received 2,000, or $22,584 in grants. The recent grant cycle is fully funded again, so I don't have the total of that. But I just heard from CEF last night that they fully funded their grants and had a conversation with the principal today about some professional development needs, and, you know, the first thing I thought of was like, hey, how about we write a grant, you know, write a CEF grant and see if they will help us out. They have been instrumental, as Jody said last night, in helping us continue to think creatively and innovatively and moving forward, and really empowering teachers to take advantage of that opportunity, even when we have tough budget years. The Feinberg Trust continues to support the arts in our schools. Recently, Sue Catch helped us install a, well, she didn't install it herself, I don't think, but helped coordinate the installation of a new case. If you've been to the high school auditorium, you'll see that there is some lovely photos and information about Mr. Feinberg, and there's clarinet and a saxophone on display, and it's really beautiful. It's a tall wooden glass case with a red velvet, just really sharp-looking, and I know that Sue used her artistic talents to help create that. We're also having our art show for the first time in eight years, nine years? Eight years. You've seen the posters popping up around town, they look great. We have 3.5 new, new art teachers this year, and as they all came on board, we said you could have a job if you'll have an art show. That's not really how it went, but...
It was kind of like that, actually.
They have really stepped up, along with their veteran colleagues, to take on this enormous task of planning a K-12 district-wide art show, and we're so excited for that. Coming up, May 7 through the 10th, there will be both visual and performing arts each day. It's from 8:30 to 7:00 each night, so Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, 8:30 to 7:00, and then on Thursday, it closes a little early at 6:30, so they can start to take down and pack up all of the, the projects. Monday night will be the big kickoff, opening, reception from 5:00 to 7:00. There will be live performances by our very talented students, some light refreshments and lots of beautiful art. I've been seeing them matting and prepping as I walk by their art rooms, and I can't wait to see. It'll be in the alumni gym this year, so a little bit different if you're used to going to the plumber gym. Just take a left instead of a right. And we also have been able to supplement some of our other programs in the district this year through this trust in the way of bringing in, like, artists in residence. So we have a trumpet instructor that was funded through this trust.
Actually, I think we're paying for the flute instructor, but they're instrumental support for the band at the high school, and in some cases at the middle school, where they're, they're adding experts, basically, because although our individual teachers are, you know, really gifted at playing different instruments and teaching different instruments, it's great to have somebody who is a flutist come in and teach the flutes or is a trumpet player come in and teach the trumpets. So that's something that Feinberg's been able to do well and good of as well. And the other piece is the marimba project.
Yes.
And I don't know if you've heard us talk about that, but we've, we've got a, a project where Jacob Wolf, who is a marimba player, I don't know if you know what a marimba is, but it's like a giant wooden xylophone, it's really cool. And Jacob is, has been contracted with us to build marimbas for our school district, but he's also an educator, and what he's done for us is to film some classes and to show kids how they're constructed and how they're played and talk about the culture. So Chris Fletcher's working on that project, and it's been really exciting for me, because I think marimbas are like the coolest thing. I really want one.
And what's really, what's really cool about that project is that it's co-supported through two different creative funding sources.
Right.
So it's partly funded through CEF and partly funded through the trust.
CEF gave Chris a grant, and then the trust gave him the other piece of it, so it's, it's been a really nice collaboration.
We have steel drums too.
Well, I don't know any steel drum players, but we can work on that.
Can we get them?
Jackie.
Yes, either Sue Catch or Joanne through the chairs.
Wait, questions after.
Oh, Jackie, you gotta wait, Jackie.
Write them down.
DataWise.
Write them on the sheet.
It's time for questions.
I've had my hand up.
Look, look, see?
And everybody else keeps talking.
Everybody keeps talking, it's true.
So, keeping with the DataWise norms, this FY19 budget for Central Office, really, there's nothing new besides increases for salaries and benefits. We've maintained the required and appropriate district-wide supports and services, working towards our long-range vision for continuous improvement. That's included in the exhibits, and we keep sharing it out in as many ways as we can, really trying to get the word out and getting people to connect with that big work that we're doing. And that vision has been in the district, it was formerly known as the 18-month plan and then became the 24-month plan, now rebranded as the Long Range Vision for Continuous Improvement, because our work will never be done, we will just keep getting better. One of the unmet needs, and this is not to discredit Kelly Johnson's work at all, it's really to highlight the fact that she has the amazing, challenging, probably impossible some days, responsibility of supporting both Joanne and I. It's pretty unprecedented to have a superintendent and assistant superintendent sharing one administrative assistant. And when I first came to Scarborough and knew that that was the case, I was like, we do what? And I think it's, it really is remarkable that Kelly's able to support both of us at the level that she does. But I worry that it may not be, Andrew, I, I worry about the sustainability of that, and really, as our work becomes more complex, you know, we, we need some more support in the Central Office, and we need Kelly. So, both of those things. So that's one of our unmet needs. We did not talk about this really last year, and we just want to put it on the radar, that this is something that we're constantly thinking about, and not necessarily just in the form of an administrative assistant. I think what really is needed is some sort of community relations or public, someone who has like a public relations background who can really help us with communication. That's something that we're hearing loud and clear, people want more communication, more timely and more different, a variety of ways. And as much as I love to think about all the different ways to do that, I need someone to help execute on those things, or we need someone, I should say, to help execute on some of those things. And Kelly is also our chief communicator. She does, you know, 90% of all of our communications in the district as well. So it is a lot for one person, and we're very lucky and fortunate to have her. So maybe it's really assisted for her.
So this last section, I'm going to pass around a summary. You see there's a little note on there that says Budget Book, page 63. We've been talking about capital projects little by little throughout this, this process, so there's, there's really no great news here. The one-page front and back summary there is just to give you the line items in the CIP budget. There are individual descriptions of each project and equipment request, starting on page 63. And so this slide is simply to say, here's what's made up, here's what our CIP budget is made up of. There are three sections. Jen is here foolishly to discuss her capital budget if needed. The tech refresh is district-wide this year, and there are a couple of items that Jen spoke to during her segment of this on April 5th. And Todd also spoke in general about his facilities projects, and most of those will look familiar to you. There are similar, similar projects year after year, building envelope, HVAC, and roofing and flooring, and all of the things that need to be maintained on a cycle over time. There's one big item under facilities this year, that's standalone project, which is the reconfiguring of traffic flow to the K2 schools, which you heard about when Todd spoke. And then transportation, we've got three buses in the CIP budget this year. We had three buses in the CIP budget last year. The three buses this year, two of those will be requesting wheelchair lifts, wheelchair access, and we'll have some flexibility in seating so that we can use them in different ways based on student needs. And there's a nice little story about why we replace buses in the budget book. It really comes down to saving money over time, and I think we've all probably had that vehicle in our lives that we're not really sure if we want to pour any more money into that one or if we want to scrap it and start over. There's always that breaking point where you're going to spend more money on repairs than you would if you went out and got a new vehicle. So we're lucky enough that we have Public Works taking care of this for us, keeping an eye on our vehicles, letting us know when one is reaching the end of its useful life, and advising us as to how that turnover and that replacement cycle should go, and they do that for the entire town. So I just wanted to give you a little highlight on this. Two things to know about the CIP budget in FY19. It's a total of $1.2 million. Last year was just under $1.4 million, so we're, you know, we're conscious of trying to keep those CIP requests as low as possible. A little bit less than what we were looking for last year, but still keeping things moving and keeping things safe. And another thing to bear in mind is that the capital project budget that we're approving for FY19 doesn't impact the bottom line of spending in FY19. Debt service for those expenses, bonds won't be issued until the spring of 2019, and debt service for those expenditures will appear in the 2020 budget. I should say, unless the town finance office decides that some of that funding should be appropriated, which... be appropriated, which really I don't think has happened on our projects, but it has happened on some of the town projects.
Jackie.
Jackie.
I just wanna remind the board and I, I don't know how, I don't remember the process, but when we have had art shows in the past, the board has purchased a piece of art and that's where the art comes from, in the superintendent's office upstairs. So who knows how that happens?
I've been thinking about, Sue's got the permanent collection in her, in her world, but that's really the high schools' display, right?
Yeah, each school, I thought, purchased.
Sue, could you talk a little bit about the permanent collection?
So the permanent collection was started with the first art show as a way to start building an art gallery for the district. And so each phase, K-2, 3, 5, 6, 8, 9, 12, we purchased one piece of art. Over the summer, someone gets it framed and, and labeled and things and it goes on display. And we chose the auditorium area because that's sort of an arts area in the building. And also, no matter what grade, our children come to that building for shows or performances of their own course, concerts or things. So we thought that they'd all get to see their art in a central location like that. So even through the years that we haven't had the art show, we've still been adding to that collection every year. I, I reach out to the art teachers in the spring and say, don't forget to pull something. We give, for K-2 and 3, 5, we purchase an art book to go in their school library and we put like a little name plate that the book was purchased for the library to thank that child for the art. And we, we work with parents. We don't, like, parents have to say it's okay for us to keep that art. We don't negotiate with the little guys. Parents say yes, it's okay. At middle school and high school, we give them a Visa gift card in the amount of $75 for the middle school and $100 for the high school to thank them for purchasing the art. And, and then the school pays for the frames and the matting and things and, and then they go on display. So as you can imagine, I think we did our first art show, maybe 89 or 90, so you know, when you go through all those years, there's quite a collection in. It's not always 2D. In the display cabinet nearest my office in the auditorium, you will see ceramics and things that have also been purchased through the years and they're in that cabinet as well. So it's quite a, it's quite a beautiful collection. We don't have the NEAS report from this time, but, but the last time we had the NEAS report, it was one of the things they mentioned in the report as a highlight that we do such a lovely job of permanently displaying and framing, so it really looks quite lovely. It's amazing what, how a frame and a nice mat can really change a child's art into really being a beautiful piece of art. So we have kind of kept that going. Kate has quietly worked with me and helped me keep funding the framing and things and the, and the gifts to the children, the thank yous to the children to keep that going. And we will do that again this year.
I do wonder though, Jackie, 'cause I remember we, we had a little refresh of the art upstairs a couple of years ago and brought in some nicely things, so maybe we need to like rotate some stuff up through upstairs too.
Jen, were you gonna add something?
I just was gonna say that one of the things I wanted to remind everybody of, and I think that we had talked about this before, is that we chose, we, we very carefully analyzed all of the maintenance reports from each phase level this year and we chose not to do a wholesale refresh at any of the phase levels because we felt like the devices had at least another life, another year of life left in them. So we are trying to make these devices last as long as possible before we just go out and replace them. So in this year's budget, there is no phase level refresh and that's part of the reason, I think, for the slightly lower. Right, the gross decrease.
So for new board members, I can't remember off the top of my head, what a refresh number is, like 500?
Typically 500.
Five, yeah, five or six. It depends on the phase level because obviously the high school will be four grades, so that would be higher than a three-grade level. And it would depend on whether or not we needed to replace carts, wiring, cabling, you know, access points, projectors, whatever. That can also be rolled into that, but we, we felt like we could, Whitworth would have been the one that, the school that would have been up next year for a refresh and we felt like we could get another year of life out of this H piece.
And another thing to maybe mention is that when we do the refresh, we have asked families to pay fees now. And when we did the one-to-one initiative for the high school, it was a big part of the conversation was, you know, how much are families gonna contribute in terms of maintenance fees and how much of that is going to be available to us. So that when we do have a, a large refresh, like at the high school, will we have some money banked to, to tap into? And at the moment, I was just gonna take a quick peek here and see if I can find.
So that fee, for people don't know, at, at the high school, that fee is $60 per year per device and 30 of that goes into a maintenance fund and 30 of that goes into a rolling refresh fund.
So we've got, you know, $100,000 or so that is, you know, available for the refresh and then we've got about the same amount right now that's available for, for maintenance. So that helps as well, definitely a big contribution there.
Any other questions about nutrition, central officer, capital projects?
I've got a couple of capital project ones. On the CTI phone upgrade, what is the like expectancy of the software once it goes in?
We put that in about five years ago. So five years, there is an upgrade. It came out, I think, late last year. We opted to hold off to do it till we could get funding for it. We do have some funding that rolled forward from that original CIP on the town side. So we did not actually budget that into the CIP on the town side, it's on the school side. So we, it's a total of 20,000, it's 10,000 on each.
And it's not a complete redo this time like it was five years ago, right?
Five years ago, it was, we rolled out cable, we, yeah, reran cable, we replaced all the phones, we replaced the routers, switches, servers, everything. Yeah, and this time it's just an upgrade to the system. There are, you know, some hardware, backend hardware upgrades we'll have to make for that, but yeah, it's a fairly minor upgrade considering.
My question was more, is it, is it less expensive to do the upgrades regularly or to do them all in one big kit?
This is the first upgrade that's come out for the system. So the first major upgrade. I think there have been little kind of minor updates that we've done. This is the first major upgrade that they've had. So yeah, we, it makes sense to just kind of wait, wait for it.
And the backup appliance for the high school, is that a switch or a lane and is that part of the disaster recovery?
That is not part of the disaster recovery, that's our routine maintenance of hardware.
Okay, thanks.
We have some hardware that's aging. And it's not clean.
You guys talking code over there?
Okay, can I ask one other question? I'm not sure if this is a, but I was just curious, I know, I think it was last fall, was it last fall, we, I think the communications, we met with you and I forget the person's name who does the.
Sean.
Yeah, and he was talking about that you may be doing a systems change and that the website would be updated. Is, is that still in play or is that gonna be happening?
So about 13 months ago now, Google announced that they were going to completely overhaul their platform, particularly for Google Sites. So they said, you know, within 18 months. The way they do it, I mean, but part of it, I think, is because they're a gigantic, enormous global conglomerate. So they kind of release some of the functionality, get feedback from people all over the world, make a decision about what they're actually gonna include, and then they repeat the process. So it's been this sort of painful, ongoing process of trying to find out what functionality is gonna be included, what new functionality is gonna be brought out and then kind of the past functionality that's gonna be brought forward. So we, we're still sort of waiting. There's a couple of key pieces for us because we did take the town Google this year too. So town and school are all Google together, we're all, we're all Googling as one together. But to do that, we really need to swap out our internet on the town side. And to do that, we're waiting on a couple of workflow pieces and, and other functionality pieces that we don't know they're gonna provide. So we're sort of in a holding pattern because since we're all Googling together, we have to sort of overhaul it all at once.
And I think, Jen, I've been asked, and I think it's true, that the school department's Google is a slightly different Google from the town's Google because we have the education version.
Yes.
Does that make any difference in terms of how we play together or?
It's a different domain. So essentially, the, the school's domain is free.
Right.
Which is the licensing.
Lovely, right.
Right. The municipal domain is not free. So they are split into two different domains. So for example, when we get a district-wide site license for Adobe, we can't use those on the town side because they go across domains and it can't cross streams. So, but there are other things in the backend, shared services-wise, that we definitely, you know, take advantage of the shared services piece.
I think that the new budget portal, if I'm not mistaken, isn't that sort of the new site version or is that just something beautiful that Sean built on the old system?
That's something beautiful that Sean built based on some feedback that we got from some other people of how they actually wanna see the site overhauled, so we kind of tested it that way to see, okay, like giant buttons, how does that work?
He's kind of a genius, I think.
Yeah, yeah. So, yeah, so we, that, that may be part of kind of the new site design moving forward, yeah. But, but the great thing about Google is that even if we are two separate domains, you still can share documents back and forth and collaborate on things back and forth across domain or even with somebody's personal Gmail. That's the beauty of Gmail, why we wanted to get, or Google, why we wanted to get everybody onto G Suite.
Plus it sounds cool.
It does, yeah.
So so far, we've had five meetings, budget meetings, budget outreach meetings. I think they've gone really, really well. Even the most recent one, there was four people in attendance, three repeat supporters or questioners and one new person, but I still think that was worth our time. He asked a lot of questions and came prepared, had clearly looked at the budget materials and had seen our presentation from before. So we talked a little bit about that in the beginning. We, I think we're done, we're not having anymore. We're afraid that it's just gonna be the five this time and then we're busy on the backend or behind the scenes working on those questions are going to be soon.
Yeah, I did wanna mention, I was talking with Larissa today and as we were going around in the, in the community, we were saying to folks, we really wanna get back to you with written responses on a lot of these questions. Larissa had committed to posting something on, on the website by the end of this month, which suddenly.
She didn't ask us about.
Suddenly occurred to me that the end of the month is like in five minutes from now. So we do have a chat this evening, she's going to go ahead and post what we have by April 30th, but as Jen just pointed out, it's a Google Doc, it's live, we can go in and we can amend it, we can update it. So she's gonna try to put something on there that says, you know, we're, we're still working on making sure that there's answers to all the questions, but here's the beginnings of that. And, and you know, I went in and did a few this evening and we'll continue to keep chipping away at them. We've also collected a few questions that weren't part of the neighborhood meetings, you know, back and forth with emails, with folks from the community asking questions and we're like, oh, that's a good question, we'll save that. So Julie and I on another document are just trying to save everything. So that, since questions repeat and typically people have some of the same wonders over time, maybe we can have something that we can share that's good for a lot of folks.
Yeah, yep. So we wanted to spend just a couple of minutes and this kind of goes with our next slide, which is talking points, but on those talking points, we wanna be able to include, like, what are the top five questions you're hearing? Do you feel like, you know, there's been repeated questions or there's that question that somebody asked you and you were like, yeah, that is a really great question?
That is such a good question.
Barb, can you try to capture these for us?
Yeah. We could put them onto the sheet that Barb's, she's got the talking points document linked in here.
Oh, that's right.
Right? On the, from the last meeting from April 5th, we had collected a few ideas. Julie?
Oh, banana. I'm just kind of talking out loud on this one, but I feel like there's kind of an old-fashioned idea about education. And I don't know how to put that into a question to you, except that from the questions that I heard, there's really not an updated sense of what school is all about.
Yeah, we kind of tackled that in little pockets, like things like, you know, I was thinking of Joanne's presentation earlier about what school nurses do.
Yeah.
And, you know, it's, and I'm, when I was in school, the school nurse gave us aspirin and it was, she was super nice. But you're right, I mean, there's, they're in every area of education, it's changed so much and yet people may still not have caught up with that.
Exactly, meaning when you think of so many different things, even over the past 10 years, about how education has changed, whether you're looking at behavior issues, including autism things and then the, you know, the, the adult ed stuff and social media issues, the medical issues, that even in 10 or 12 years, it's just amazing how things have changed in schools.
And expectations for what students can learn at, at an age.
Yeah.
But are these, these are, I thought, the top five questions that we got at those meetings.
Right, yeah. Yeah, yeah, that's why I'm just thinking out loud to you about.
How do you turn it into a question?
So how do you turn that into a question is.
No, but like, these are questions that people are asking us.
That they had for us.
That they have already.
Us created.
That we've heard already.
Yeah, exactly. So one of them, for example, was the adult ed question. Why isn't it a self-sufficient program? Because when you ask them, well, what are you thinking about what it is?
What does it do?
Then they explain this really old-fashioned idea about what the heck it was, you know, what it used to be years ago. And so I don't know if it's kind of like whether we need to be doing at those outreach sessions, a more of a, a little bit of an introduction about school or I'm not quite how, sure how to get there, to bring people along.
So I think that's a different conversation. I think, I think what tonight, and forgive me because I'm like sort of just spent at this point, I think we just need to sit with what are the five top questions that came out of those meetings that the public had, that we need to focus on for this budget? I think your conversation, it's, I think it's correct in that librarians have changed, teachers have changed, school nurses have changed. I think that's a different conversation, a different workshop.
And maybe that's, maybe that's more of a communication strategy, sort of like a did you know series or.
And so we have a communication meeting on Monday or Tuesday, so we'll take that on.
Okay. It's yours.
Okay.
So, okay. One of the questions I heard a couple of times was, why do we need three, three new buses every year?
That's a good one, I've seen that one.
I think it, I think that is good because I think you sort of over time wonder, well, at some point we have to catch up.
Right.
Right, like why is it every year?
But I think, but there is an interesting story that I think Kate.
Well, do you think the question is, why are there three buses every year and not two buses or why are there three buses every year?
Why do we need to buy three new buses every year? Why can't we use the ones we have?
What's wrong with the ones we've got? Perfect, okay.
Make sure you tell them how many buses we have.
Well, that's, yeah, that's, part of it is the math, how many buses do you have? How many years do they, how many years are they going to?
How many miles they have on them?
Same thing with our tech refresh, it's the same sort of, why do you, it's the same thing with the pickup question.
When are you done?
Why are we buying a pickup?
When are you done, right? And you're not done because it's cyclical. So yeah, that's a good one.
Another question that I heard, I don't know if this is gonna be like a top five, but.
Barb, are you tapping up top or down?
Will you move me down, I'll move back up.
Sorry.
We're not on the same page.
If you were not on the same page.
I said because it's on this one pager.
Well, I got, I got a couple of questions about what does this mean, redesign educational technicians to year-round, whatever.
I mean, I have the, I had the answer to that one, but it was, I, I've heard it a few times and I think it's because we highlighted it.
Because we said what, here's what we're doing. And so now we need to get more into about what that is.
So I don't know if that makes the top five, but it is one that I heard a couple of times.
Well, what's cool about that is we have a document that talks all about it, so we could link that in.
And it'd be a great visual.
And some, you know, some really nice material that's already written that we could just link into the questions.
So that is, did you catch that one, Barb?
No, what was that?
That was...
What's going on with the tech, what is it called, tech support?
Redesign the educational technicians to year-round IT positions.
I have a question, not a question so much. I think we need to explain succinctly to the public what we have done in the last year that, that makes us more efficient.
So what have we done in the last year that makes us more efficient?
At the meeting though, I was at, they asked specifically, what, are you challenging your department heads to save money?
Cut a certain percent every year or that sort of thing.
And I think that goes along with the question that I got, that was, what are you doing to think outside the box to fund?
I would, I would put, I want this as a separate one. What are you doing to think outside the box to fund things?
Like, one of them is reducing costs and one of them is alternate revenue, I guess.
The one thing I keep, I've heard, heard this year and then I think I've heard the last few years is, why don't you do like a three-year projection?
We had a hard time doing a one-year projection.
Now, the two-year projection, we threw out and started over, but we, you know, we could certainly articulate that, talk about why that's difficult.
There's been a lot of questions about fund balance.
I'll tell you another one.
Fun balance.
Why do we pay our employees competitive salaries?
Yeah, wait a second, Leanne's trying to ask something.
Jackie, go ahead and I'll go after it.
Okay, good.
Why do we pay, or why do we want to pay our employees competitive salaries?
I didn't hear that one.
Well, I did say one about are our salaries competitive and what do you do to find that out? So it's sort of the same idea, right?
Well, we, I had a similar, similar question at the one you were at, but people were not upset. I mean, people were like, okay, we are not the best paid, we're not the worst paid, we're competitive. And I think pretty much everyone in the room was cool with that.
Yeah, I think they were interested to see how do we, how do we negotiate?
Right, like what's the process to get there?
How do we figure that out?
Like, you know, do, what kind of like pre-work do you do before you get to the table, kind of stuff?
I can answer that question.
Leanne's going to just ask a question. Everybody, Leanne has the floor.
There, there's a lot of questions about the fund balance, how it's calculated, how long it can last, and why do we have it?
And why do we use it?
Yes.
Why do we use it?
I've got a pretty decent document about that that I, I think I started to share with one of you guys and then I, I didn't ever refresh it. So that's a good one. Fund balance, how's it used, what's it for, what the heck is it, right?
And I don't think we want this list to be 10 questions.
No, I just think we should then go back and say, okay, which ones?
Because I think that's, that's part of the, the challenge, I'll say, is that we then just like start...
It's so much.
It's too much.
It's too much.
Well, and we have probably, I don't know, 75 questions or so. Some of them are sort of repeats or some of them are, you know, and some of them are one que, you know, it's a sentence. Because blah. And some of them is, you know, paragraph.
But that's different because that's saying, okay, here's all the questions we heard and we're answering them in this form. This is more like, here's the top five questions, like hand, handout almost.
Right. And, and, and one of the things that resonated with you guys, you know, what are you hearing where, like Julie said, you go, oh, that's a good question. If I could answer that one, I really feel like it would make a difference in, in people's understanding.
So I think if it was me, I would take out the first one. I think that's too specific. And I didn't really hear it.
All right. So why don't we just strike through it, Barb? So it's there, but we're saying that's not our top one.
I'm just saying, we're trying to get it down to five.
And remembering that it will be answered in some way because it will be answered in the, you know, response to this, it's always the questions.
And we have the answers if somebody asks us specifically, but this is like a generalized question.
I think number eight is probably like one of the top questions.
I agree. I would keep that for sure.
Go to it for not text.
I think number seven is, can probably be taken.
Oh, there it is. Thank you.
It's a race.
Can we strike through it?
It's a race.
Stop Googling each other.
We're getting there eventually.
I would, I, I don't think seven needs to be on there. That's not a top question.
But there, you could be rewriting that a little bit about, you know, how do we determine, or a lot of questions about negotiations.
Well, these questions though are captured from your meeting.
True, I'm sorry, I'm contradicting myself.
Right, I'm not saying we're not, we don't answer these questions or we don't know the answers. I'm just saying they're not the top five, like, like burning questions of the community.
I think it's, the question I hear more is, how, how do our salaries compare? Maybe, you know, like, are they competitive?
And I'd almost make the argument because it's such a large amount of money, if we're talking 75% of the budget is salaries. That may be something to help.
That's a big impact, right?
Then I would keep it to, how, right, how?
I would keep it as B.
How does the salary compare? And that's a visual.
Okay, right?
Yep.
I'm cool with that. I, I think if we're talking about this year's budget specifically, I think that the IT position is a good one.
Well, and particularly, as you said, because it's on our one pager. And if that's, you know, people are reading through that and going, yeah, I know what a classroom teacher is. And I know what this is and that is.
Required services got it.
Can we, on that one pager, can we just rewrite that so it's a little more information there? So that it's just a little clearer or is it not on there?
Kind of complex.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I didn't know. I was like, I don't think.
I wonder, but we could, we could leverage our Google-ness and, and we could put that one pager and then have a link in it that goes live to the backup material for it. It doesn't help the person who's like...
Because that seems like an ea, that seems like an easy one to explain, you know what I mean?
Right.
I don't know. It doesn't feel like a burning budget question as much as just, I don't understand what that is.
Doesn't the budget book have a diagram that Jen did on that?
Jen's got a whole section in her, in the town part of it, is with the budget book. And then there's, she pulled that out for us. I think it's, actually it's an exhibit in the budget book.
We have about seven minutes with this.
I, not that I don't think it's important that we have done things in the past year to make us more efficient, but I'm not sure that it's relevant to next, next year's budget as much as the other things. I mean...
Like keep the think outside the box running, but get rid of the, what have you, what have you done last year to make it more efficient?
Like that's last, you know, like, I feel like that's something that, that's like a retrospective as, as, as opposed to a looking forward to the next year's budget.
And again, it will still be answered, it's just not going to be...
Right, a top five.
Would it be more top five if it were sort of fluid to say, you know, do you look for efficiencies in your operations? Or is that not really a question?
Well, number five, you could answer that in number five. What are you doing to think outside the box?
You could fold that into number five.
Okay.
Well, you could combine it. What are you doing to think outside the box to fund things and be more efficient?
Right.
Yeah.
Right, and then you could include the creative funding.
So just add and be more efficient.
Talk about the curtailment.
See, what you're doing here is you're making two questions into one, which is cheating.
Cheating.
We've been accused of that before.
Okay, do we feel like this, why do we need three buses each year as a keeper?
Yes.
Okay. And we think this one, why did we redesign the ed tech positions?
I think because it's on our one pager, it's a good one to have.
Okay. What about this, why don't we do a three-year projection?
There are some people who are really passionate about that, but I'm not sure how widespread that is.
Yeah, I think it is a small group that answers.
Right, there's your top five questions. Like we've said before, it's, it's still, it's not like we're not answering other questions. These are just...
Right, we'll still answer them, we just won't focus on them and bring them forward ourselves.
And this is really to get you thinking about all four.
Kate, you have an assignment.
Write down every question that you answered. Okay.
At the public hearing? Okay, well, you know I sit there with my notebook and I take notes the whole time, so I'll do that.
So the other thing we want to be thinking about is what content do we want on the June 1 mailer? And so remember, our initial aim was for this to be like a half-pager. There's not much content you can put on that. We might want to think about, is it something that is a folded, a folded mailer that opens up? So it's still one piece of paper, but it gives you a little bit more landscape? Or is it an actual like postcard? I don't know the cost differences between the two, but one of the things we heard loud and clear last year was people want a mailer. And so the intent is that it is like in your mailbox by June 1 and it's like the get out the vote reminder. It's also what to come out and vote for and have some like bottom line numbers on that, which we won't have until after the second reading, but we should be thinking about design. And since we have people who are experts in marketing on this team, I think that maybe communications and finance coming together or thinking together about what that might look like would be a good strategy for that, but I wanted to see what thoughts you had.
And I think as people have ideas, maybe emailing to Hillary as the communications chair or...
Yeah, that's fine. I can, I can spear her that.
And sort of...
Get another shared Google app going.
Yeah. So, are we allowed to have, we can't have like a joint communications and finance meeting, right?
Can't we?
Yeah.
Oh, we can.
We just, we just have to publicize.
So maybe that's something that we should aim for, like everyone do ideas, talk.
A joint meeting would only be like, because Jody and I carry over both.
It would just add Leanne, right, okay. So then that's easier than I thought it was.
You would get a partner, so you'd have to make it a meeting.
But if you're thinking about timing, and I don't know what access you have to like printing resources or who we want to think about for that, but the turnaround time from the second reading, the second reading's May 16th, our second reading's May 17th. You pretty much have to have something ready to go at that point so that we're sending it off on the 18th to be printed.
That's close.
That's like super tight.
Based on stuff I've done before.
That's wicked close.
So why don't we go back to look into some printing business?
We can buy local on that, that would be...
We have a student who did the posters for the art show, who gave us a really good price and is a Scarborough parent. Waterfront Printing?
No, it's...
What's the name of it?
Yeah.
I'd have to look it up. Oh, you can look it up, I'm right here.
It's not Waterfront though, I don't think.
The Magic Box will tell me.
All right, so send that to Hillary, because we're meeting on, are we meeting on Monday?
Yes.
Monday.
What time are you meeting?
Two.
All right.
Not that we couldn't get quotes from other places, but I just happen to know that this person was very supportive of it.
We only have one audience member, can we just ask, I don't know if you have any question, if you, like you, looking at our five questions, if you had anything that jumped out at you. And I don't want to put you on the spot. If you don't have anything to ask, don't be on the spot.
Well, I, I thought the point that Donna, Mrs. Bailey, sorry, was trying to bring up was a, was a valid one. I think there's a lot of older people in the community that don't really understand what is being taught in school. And when you talk about the school purchasing 3D printers and other things, they look and go, what, I thought school was just reading, writing and arithmetic. Why am I being charged in my taxes to pay for a 3D printer? Why am I being charged for these? They grew up in a time where, you know, school was, I got slapped on the wrist if I did something wrong. It was, it was pretty binary. You learn, education, you learn to be individual worthy in the office. And school's a lot different than that nowadays and that's where they really struggle to understand where some of the line items that they look at and they, I never had this at school, we had shop. We bought pieces of wood and built things. So I, I'm wondering if, if, I think there is a question there that, I, I don't know if you want to make that public, but there is a portion of the population that most likely wants that answered for them. It is, school's a lot different.
What if we did like a series of some sort?
Right, like I feel like that's a, such a broad...
That's a really...
Yeah, you're like, right, that's a lot of things to tell people about, right? Because it's not just, you know, it's 3D printers and the nurses do different things and like it's, it's...
Librarying isn't a life of different...
Right, it's like so widespread that maybe it's not like a top five question.
And you can look at it, you can explain to them through math, right? They learned math. 3D printing is mathematics, right? You're using calculus, you're using, you're using calculus, you're using derivatives. Things that students are learning in school because you take the shape under the curve and you, and you, I forget off the top of my head, you do integrations around it. But if you can explain to them that a 3D printer is just a way for them to visually show the mathematics that they're doing, right? You did it on a piece of paper in school, it was hard for you to understand. Well, for example, we bought 3D printers so the student could do out the math for whatever shape they wanted to create and the printer does it. And that's just an example of a way to potentially present it to someone like that. Because, you know, to them, 3D printers, you never saw this ever coming, right? 3D printers, the fact that science is printing parts, printing all sorts of things nowadays, it's tough for them to see.
I think actually you have a good idea. I think that if we did it example-based.
You might know that.
For specific things.
Oh, that's a good point.
Like this, the 3D printer, that's a specific example of something that's super high-tech and this is what it's teaching you. And then find another example of something that, you know, so use, like have it be example-based of, yeah, like then...
Could we have the students, I know this might be too much for the amount of time we have, but it'd be so neat to have the students showing it. You know, having a video and having the student saying, I do this so I can, that'd be...
Dylan, that could be your next project.
At one point, we were talking about like going to retirement communities or the library and showing...
Full-time, full-time.
We were thinking about it as showing episodes of inside Scarborough schools, but also inviting students or somebody along with us. So we could either do it, do it that way, or we could have, if students wanted to make video projects and then come, or even better, have a teacher come or whatever to answer questions and host little open houses or go to places where people are.
A good example, when you're working with older people, is persuasive writing. When they were a kid and they did a persuasive writing, they had to take a newspaper. And today, they can go online and get newspapers from around the world to do a persuasive writing, you know? And that kind of puts it into why laptops give students another perspective and how to...
So we can, we can talk about that in communications.
Yeah, and I think there's an opportunity, the library, the public library is always asking, offering to do partnerships and work with this. Like it would be a cool little, um, display that could stay there and a series of, you know, different things.
I like the display idea at the library because that gets a lot of use by, you know, wide range of people.
And also even, even evening or a Sunday afternoon, like people go to, they, they often host some of these events over there where a lot of people come to to learn something just for a couple of hours, you know? I mean, that would be a really cool thing to be what it was and what it is now.
That could be just such a nice multi-generational event, you know, to have some older folks talking about how they, you know...
It's almost like the carousel in progress I did. My favorite ride. I'm not even kidding, it's actually my favorite ride.
Yeah, that's what we do, right? It's the Scarborough Carousel.
Yes. We have one more minute until Rapha.
These things are coming for real.
Thank you.
I think that, and we've discussed this before, but not in depth, that, that maybe starting the first of May, that we have an hour or an hour and a half period every Friday afternoon, visit your neighborhood school. And we have children available to, to take whomever around. And I, I don't care if it's a kindergarten child or a high school senior, but it should be the same time every week at every school. And people should be welcomed in to see what is going on.
We talked about that too, actually, a long time ago, right? Yeah, that's a good, we can talk about that again. I don't know if that falls under communications or not, but it's probably more school department.
Some logistics, but I, you know, it might work. Maybe nobody comes, who knows?
I think that's a great way to help get a deeper understanding of all kinds of things. Efficiency-based education, the writing, the reading, I mean, all of the work that we're do, that we've been... Efficiency-based education, the writing, the reading, I mean, all of the work that we're do, that we've been working on, and for people to understand the complexity of the teaching role.
I think we have evidence of that, effectiveness of that, when we opened Wentworth, because we had a lot of people from the community come in and see the building, and in doing so, they saw, you know, the special ed equipment, they, for kids with severe disabilities, they saw, oh, wow, you have a room for OT? Oh, gosh, you have a 3D printer?
And it worked very well in the.
You know, there was a lot of really neat, sort of eye-openers for folks who, who took the time to take those tours.
It worked very well in the old school, to get them to understand why we needed them in the school.
How terrible.
When they saw some of the equipment that was in schools today for some kids, and also some of the rooms that were being used for classrooms. One of the things that should be happening, I tell you, I was absolutely blown away and fascinated when that third or fourth-year-old boy was in the Learning Commons at Wentworth, and showing how to use that whiteboard. Honest to goodness, it just.
Blew you right away.
Blew my socks off.
All right, how did the meeting go?
Good.
It was good.
Okay, good.
Still did not stick to our time.
Well, no, it's not bad, though, it's not bad.
It's a lot better.
We're, we're five minutes ahead of Datalife.
Now, we have, well, we have three minutes to do this, what, we gain time in the beginning, and then we lose a little bit as we go.
It's tough practice.
Yeah, but you have to keep in mind that to get to the 9:30, we did shave time off, hoping the beginning would go faster. And I think, I felt like people were more aware of where we were in the agenda, and I, I felt. That there was progress over the last, Jody is on data time.
Delta, Jody needs, uh, DataWise.
I have my book in my bag.
I think we should just go around the table, and then people don't get interrupted.
Jackie, you start.
Well, I'm sorry that Dylan didn't, didn't have anything to say this evening, but he, he tells me that he's been educated, so. I'm happy with that.
That's pretty broad.
I know.
Dylan did say that he thought the budget book was interesting.
Really?
Yeah, I, I, I read the budget, believe it or not, and it was not bad.
Did you know?
I, I like that.
Yeah, actually, I think you said not bad, more than interesting.
I like that in the budget, you include like, each department's report and budget together, so you, you're kind of getting information of what's happening, and also like, sneaking on all the facts that, trying to convince people to pay for.
No, sneaking.
Place, artfully placing.
Artfully placing.
Um, I thought we did pretty well on DataWise time, I'm too chatty, and I realize that, but, um, I thought this was very productive, a lot of great engagement, I can't believe how tired we all are, and yet we're really in there pitching, so, good for us.
Pass.
Pass?
Yeah.
Are we both passing?
Yep.
Why are people passing?
Because I already said it.
Turn.
I, I love this format, ladies, nicely done, it's right up my alley. I love to know, I have time constraints on everything.
Give or no.
I love that we're working towards being more efficient.
And I would like some feedback from one of the last deltas about so much information at once. Did you like the shorter timeframe, this time where we did six departments?
I can, yeah.
Yeah, I feel like you can absorb more, and you can go a little deeper, definitely.
I think it made sense to do the three, you know, like, Joanne presented three at once, and sent the office, and they got lumped together. And I think for this size group especially, that worked well, I think for a really big group, that might not have.
And that was something we did do because we knew people would be tired.
But pass.
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 I just said it.
No, I, I really like, I do like the format, I guess some people already said that, but I, I like it, and I think it's, and I just like the discussion. I just like the open discussion.
So much more fun without Robert.
I do like that you changed the intervals to be shorter, and the questions to be longer, because that's clearly the way we overall.
Robert's boxing.
It's very.
Come talk, because we're going to have even more. Um, Donna, I just want to mention that I, I have already posted the slide deck on the budget portal, because I'm trying to just do it right now, and we're all so efficient, um, so it's out there, um, the public can access it, and there, and there are links in it, just like there are in the, in the presentation, so people can go and see the agenda, they can go and see our notes, so, it's all right there.
Anybody else? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Show a move.
Second.
Call a favor?
It was a quick start.